Good evening, everybody. Welcome to Foxborough's Board of Selectmen, June 23rd, 2015, public meeting. I'll read down the agenda. At 7:00 we have citizens' input, followed at 7:10, selectmen's update. At 7:15, we're having Lakeview Pavilion come before us for a public hearing for alteration of premises and new directors. At 7:25, we have scheduled Red Robin, another public hearing for the change of their location over at Patriots Place. At 7:40, NPS LLC has a third public hearing on, or third public hearing tonight first, on ACDC Concert. 7:50, the Board of Selectmen has an agenda item to approve the Estoppel Agreement at Gillette Stadium regarding the insurance. At 8:00, another item for the Board of Selectmen, commercial parking regulations and commercial parking permits to be issued. At 8:10, Mary Beth Bernard will present and we will discuss and vote on the fire contract, followed by 8:20, Mary Beth also will talk about the policy on sexual harassment in our vacation policy for town employees. At 8:30, Board of Selectmen item to discuss the Fail Place, which is a road off of Main Street, and not a throughway, signed petition from the neighborhood. And at 8:40, Town Manager Bill Keegan will offer a Town Manager Update, and then we have about a dozen action items in between. So, actually, Mary Beth, you want to lead us in the pledge of allegiance?
... to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So, just a few things under Chairman's Update. First, I just wanted to give a kind of a shout out to the people that were responsible for Founder's Day, Cindy Hadad Drew and Steve Hadrew for the organization of Founder's Day Parade, Monica Fizzler for the parade itself, the fireworks. I think it was very well attended, the public safety and all the people really that put together the floats and the tables, and I know we all marched and it seemed like it was a good time, so, and it was great weather, so it was another good year. Very briefly, we had a joint meeting last week, we talked about it the week before, with members of the Planning Board, AdCom Advisory Committee, and the Recreation Board on the Sharon Watson Pavilion down on Payson Road. That was pretty well attended and got some good direction. And we started today, we see, there's a grant application going out, and I think the different departments are looking at their role in this. Again, if anyone's interested, probably the best person to reach, if you know anybody on any of those boards, reach out, kind of spearheading the list is Heather Harding over at the Rec Director, so please reach out, and it's still on schedule to try to put something together before winter falls. Briefly, just something that kind of gets forgotten sometimes, Ginny and I attended a meeting on Saturday for the Friends of the Foxborough Seniors, and I think over the last couple of years, I find a lot of us talking about the kids and the sports and the graduation in the schools, but I was pretty impressed with the magnitude and the depth of that group, what they do for the town. And in particular, we were invited just to participate a little bit on a scholarship that they offered a student for her master's degree, so, you know, it's a good example of the seniors working together and then reaching out to the community. So, if you are a senior out there, it's a great group to get involved with, so it's definitely worth the time to go to a Saturday meeting. One thing that's not on the agenda, we talked about last time, was the Town Common Sign in a couple of reasons. One, the agenda is pretty full today, but more importantly, I think, Bill, I don't know if you can talk about it during your time, but there is a program that we're working on to keep those signs updated, so I think we'll put it on the next item. I think you'll have time to put everything together.
Right. Yeah, we're trying, working to try and figure that out.
Yep. One item I was asked to put on the agenda, and I purposely didn't, over at Forge Estates over along East Street, Canoe River, there's a subdivision planned there. It's under appeal right now. A couple of people had asked me from that group down there to put it on to discussion. I don't think it's appropriate at this meeting because it's a Conservation Commission issue, Planning Board issue, and they're dealing with the DEP. But I will say, there is a meeting tomorrow at 2:00 at Boyd and Library with MEPA, not DEP, but MEPA, to find out all the permits, so if anyone has time to go sit through that. I went to the sidewalk last week, and it was very informative, but again, it doesn't really belong on this table, and I think you guys got emails at the same time, so let's leave that to Concom and Planning Board. One topic I wanted to talk about, I went to a meeting, a training session on Narcan. If you remember back in December, we had a resident urging the board to get involved, or the police to get involved, and do Narcan Training, which is a dose that you give somebody that's overdosing on heroin. So, I went to it in Mansfield. It was attended by the Mansfield Public Safety People. Jay Barrows had spearheaded it with somebody from Pine Street Inn, and there's three or four people in the walls, Chris Long, that started this effort over here. We're going to bring that to Foxborough in July. It's July 22nd, and it's a good opportunity. It's the buzz of the state right now because the governor just released his report on how they're going to address the heroin issues. It does affect Foxborough, so it's July 22nd over at the Universalist Unitarian Church around the Common, so we'll probably get flyers out for that and hopefully put something in the paper, and it's just a good opportunity to kind of get involved in that as well. So, that being the Chairman's Update, the Selectmen's Update, is there anyone for citizens' input? I held off because there was really nobody here when we started. Still nobody? Nobody? Anyone? Okay. So, we've got 7:15 for a Lakeview Pavilion, so I don't want to start that. If we wait like a few more minutes, let's go through some of our action items. And last, while we have the tension, do you want to give your update now?
I can do that, if you like.
Yeah, I can do that.
We've got a couple, couple items here that, you're going to find it now. There we go. Just a couple really timely issues that are coming up. One is the fact that I think the residents know that there is a change in the trash program that's coming up, and it's going to begin on June, on July 1. Actually, duly, trash removal company will be actually taking over most of the town. At that point, I'd say probably about 80 or 90 percent of the town will be utilizing that service at this point. However, there were a number of folks who actually had trash bags and trash tags from Russell's disposal, and a question had arisen as to whether or not they could get reimbursement for those items past June 30th. And Russell has offered to set aside three dates, two dates in July and a date in August to offer reimbursement for folks who bought those bags and tags. So, there will be the dates of July 14th, July 28th, and August 4th, from 5:00 to 8:00 PM at Town Hall. And what we ask folks to do is to come in, to bring back your bags and tags, and what will happen is that you will actually be giving, be given a voucher for all of those items, and then you will be receiving a check within 10 days from Russell's disposal, from them directly, so they'll be mailed out directly to your homes. So, anyone who wants to do that, I do caution everyone that August 4th is the last day of the law for that program, so we encourage everybody to come and address it on those three dates, if possible. And I, and following up on what the Chairman's report was earlier this evening, that there was, at the last meeting, there was a request made by Mr. Jacothlet to have the messages on the message boards in the Common changed. We actually did change the message boards, and we actually did that within 48 hours. We couldn't do it the first 24 hours because the Director was actually away, and so I was able to get him the very next morning after that, and he was able to address it within the next, that morning. The reason why the messages were not changed regularly was that the person who was normally assigned that work was actually out on extended leave, and the duties were not reassigned. After looking at this situation, we are looking for a more practical solution to this responsibility. For now, we are managing the changes to the board through our office, but we are looking to get someone from perhaps the senior workout program to handle these duties once a week. Until we find something to do, we will continue to manage the changes from our office in the short term. And I've also talked again with the Director of Public Works to see if he has any further thoughts about how we might do that on a regular basis as well. And secondly, the town may notice that we've added a new safety light near the Common that allows pedestrians to safely cross from the Common towards the library. During the past year, we heard concerns from both residents and employees that crossing the road in this area was quite dangerous. Last fall, the Town Engineer, the DPW Director, the Police Chief, and the Library Director and I met to review the situation to see if we come up with a solution that might work. The result was that ultimately, was ultimately determined by the Town Engineer, is now what you see at this crossing. This is a solar-powered pedestrian signal that gets actuated by pedestrians, resulting in a flashing LED light. I personally used the light on two or three occasions, and now, and it seems to work well. And I've actually heard a number of folks really comment positively that this is actually a very, very, very good change. This is a, it's, this was probably the least cost impact, as well as the fact it was a more practical way of addressing it, because we don't have any signals in this, in and around the Common, and this is probably the least invasive type of construction that we could have done without ripping up sidewalks and tearing things up to know how to do that. So, I'm certainly, you know, I, understanding the fact that now that perhaps we probably had a little more discussion about this before we did it, but it seemed at the time that it was quite a concern about people almost getting hit crossing that area, so the action was to move forward and address it as soon as we could. So, I certainly am open to any thoughts the board may have about this, but I wanted to make sure you were fully aware of that, and that it is actually being utilized, and actually been thanked by several people already for actually putting it in.
Does it stop traffic, or just alert the driver?
It actually, it actually slows the traffic, it actually stops the traffic, and I can tell, tell you that, two or three times that I've used it, people have actually stopped and let us cross, let me cross, or if I was with someone else, they crossed with me. It was no issue at all. It just, it's a push-button actuated light, and it flashes a white light, not a yellow light, but a white light, and then, and it just alerts people that there is a crosswalk there and lets people, let people cross safely. It does, what happens is the traffic comes around the corner from Mechanic Street, and a lot of times, they speed up when they try to get into the rotary, and then they don't, they don't slow down at that particular crosswalk. And of course, a lot of people go from the Common over to the library, and that, that in of itself causes the level of concern. So, we have young children, we have employees, we have, you know, a lot of residents using that particular crosswalk for that reason, so we want to make sure we had a safe way to cross folks in that area. So, I just want to make everybody fully aware of that. I'd want it to, if there's any comments or concerns, we certainly will be happy to entertain those and listen to everybody, whatever you guys have to say about it.
We've actually used those in traffic calming situations as part of mitigation.
Mm-hmm.
It's been really successful.
Okay.
So, it's highly recommended by the Federal Highway Administration.
On the MUTCD recommendations as well.
Yep.
I'm kind of glad, too, that you guys all met and figured it out and just got it done, you know, being a safety issue and concern.
Well, I appreciate that. I think that there was a lot of folks that were actually very grateful that we were able to act as quickly as we did, and I really want to congratulate and thank Chris Gallagher, who came up with the idea, as well as Roger Hill for making, make it all happen as well. So, I want to at least get that out there.
So, I don't want to be the negative one on this.
Oh, sure.
Talk to you about this.
Yeah.
I think it's great, and that, honest to God, I was coming up the other way, you know, the traffic goes around this way, guy came and went the exact opposite way around the rotary this morning, and I know it happens often, so, and that turn has been problematic coming by the library, and I think it worked out well. The only reservation I have is when we change things on the Common, whether it's a light, and this time it worked out well.
Yeah.
Any changes should really come in front of the board, even though it was a, you know, you met out there and it was fine. If it was a decision that was not the right decision, we end up saying, how did you let that happen?
Yeah.
So, when we see the lights out there and someone says, how did that get there? And we say, we don't know. The sacredness of the Common always comes up, so.
I think that's a fair point, and I obviously will take that obviously in full consideration next time that happens, if something like that comes up. It's a, obviously, we want to, we want to be sensitized to, we are sensitized to the Common on virtually everything we do, but I think this was a case where we, I think we acted as quickly as we could without really giving full consideration to that, but next time, we certainly will have that.
And I know in the past, they tried the board that, in the middle of the lane, that you could hit, and it would come back up, and it just flattens. I think it lasts a lot of weeks, so hopefully the light works better.
Yeah. And then, and last but not least, earlier today, we held the Public Records Training at the library. A number of staff members attended. I was able to go for a little while, and unfortunately, I had another thing I had to attend in the middle of that, but Select McCupola attended as well. And I wanted to actually turn it over to Mary Beth because she was able to attend the full meeting, and she was actually instrumental in pulling it all together, so, Mary Beth?
Yes, thank you. I have copies for those of you who didn't attend, and inside is the contact person for the, who actually presented to us today. So, it is Angela Puccini from the Secretary of State's Office. And basically, she, can you hear this now? Thank you. She talked to us about how to respond to timely records, public records requests, how to calculate and estimate whether, you know, the time we spend and whether there's a fee or not, when it's reasonable to charge a fee, when it's not. She went through the exemptions, which were really interesting, and outlined very clearly in that book about where and when there is an exemption to public record law, and I'm not going to go through all of them, there's one exemption, every letter of the alphabet that has three or four categories under it. But the most important question that Bill posed to her is where the public records law and open meeting law intersect. And she concurred that there's a lot of times when the two laws don't actually agree. And she talked about the ability to file an appeal when there's a request, whether it's with the Attorney General's Office on the open meeting law or with the public records request. She offered her personal direct line, you know, when there's questions encouraged, when at all possible, that she would answer questions. She was quite knowledgeable, and she, so she outlined for us, you know, how the process works from the municipal government point of view, and, you know, said that quite often, one board, like the Attorney General's Office, wouldn't give an opinion until her office had concluded their, their study or their opinion and vice versa. So, it was a really interesting segment. I think, I wish we could have gotten more in-depth on some of our particular questions. There were members from all departments that attended, a member of your board, School Department, Bill Yukne attended, asked some very good questions. It's just in the day of, day and age of media and, you know, responding via email, she talked a lot about that, how we can use, you know, email to respond, copying them on, showing them that we're satisfying a public records request and all of that. So, it was very, very helpful. I asked that she share the PowerPoint with us. She had to go back and ask permission, so when that happens, we will share it with you. And again, we put her contact information in there in case you have any questions.
Okay. Thank you. And then, just a couple of other items which I didn't have on my list here, but I wanted to let the board know that I've been looking into the idea of community choice aggregation for electricity, see whether or not we can pursue that. We have to require a town meeting action in order to do this, but it would allow us the opportunities to, to offer the entire community electricity at a reduced cost, at a fixed rate cost for extended period of time. I know that Selectman Feldman was quite interested in pursuing this issue early on, and I've kept him involved in this discussion as well. And I actually met with someone who was actually working on this particular project for several communities right now, and they've been giving me some advice on how we can stop pursuing this a little bit further. All right. The other thing is, I just wanted to follow up a little bit on the Sharon Watson project in that we did take this issue up at our, at our staff meeting last week. Both Bill Kispaw and Roger Hill have offered ways to try, to possibly address this. I don't know if they've had conversations with you already, Jim, but perhaps they're looking at a package type of program, which would be easier for us to do the true bond-raising type of approach, so we're looking at that. And then, last but not least, Economic Development Committee, I've been getting several names in, so probably by the start of, probably by next month, we'll be able to stack on this as well. All right, I'll be bringing some names forward to let you know that we've got a committee going, committee established. Okay?
Thank you. Appreciate that. Okay, so it'll be in a few minutes after 7:15, other representatives from Lakeview Pavilion. So, yeah, if we could read the public hearing notice into the record.
Board of Selectmen of the Town of Foxborough, acting as the local licensing authority pursuant to Mass. General Law, Chapter 138, will conduct a public hearing on Tuesday, June 23rd, 2015, at approximately 7:15 PM in the Foxborough High School Media Center, 120 South Street, Foxborough, Mass., on an application to alter the premises of an annual all-alcoholic beverage, beverages, restaurant license, and new officer slash director and new stockholder for Steve's Lakeview, Inc., doing business as Lakeview Pavilion, at 45 Lakeview Road, Foxborough, Mass. Manager, and I apologize in advance for this, Anastasia Tousambas. All interested parties are invited to attend the hearing.
Thank you. So, what we'll do is, now that the meeting is opened, we hear from the applicant, and then we'll hear from the Town Manager if he wants to summarize any of the staff comments, it's public safety, and then we'll open up for discussion, and then before we close it, where it's a public hearing, we'll listen to the, if there's anyone in the audience that wanted to say something, then we'll close it, and then we'll have discussion and vote. So, if you could introduce yourself for the record.
Attorney Frank Spleen, representing Steve's Lakeview, Inc. At the outset, I'd just like to apologize to the owners, Anastasia and Natalia, not being here this evening. They're on a flight back from Greece today, and because of the weather, the flight was delayed, and we just got word it just landed, so I don't anticipate they're going to make it here. It was supposed to land earlier today and be here in time, with plenty of time, but because of the weather conditions, the flight couldn't land. We're here requesting an alteration to the licensed premises, as well as a change of stockholders within the Steve's Lakeview, Inc., as well as new officers. As well, as I'm sure everyone here is aware, on April 5th, 2014, the Lakeview Pavilion facility was destroyed by fire. At that time, the owners came out and were very committed to rebuilding the facility. I have here a drawing of what the new building will look like. It started with approvals from all the town boards that were required on June 19th. Just a little over two months after the fire, we were in front of the Board of Appeals for approval of a special permit to reconstruct a non-conforming structure after catastrophe and for some variances for height and side yard setbacks. As I'm sure everyone on the board knows, Lakeview Pavilion is on Lakeview Road, which is a residential district. Lakeview Pavilion dates back to the very early 1900s, so it's a pre-existing, non-conforming structure and use. So, we had to go in front of the Zone Board of Appeals for that special permit and for some variances, which we got approved. On July 10th, we were in front of the Planning Board for site plan approval and a special permit. A special permit was required because this is in a water resource district right beside Lakeview Lake, so that's why we needed a special permit to reconstruct the facility again, and again, we got the approvals. And then, on July 31st, we got a Conservation Commission Order of Conditions. And our work with the town is always ongoing with especially Conservation Commission and the Building Department. Briefly, the new building will be two floors, a first floor and a basement. The first floor is approximately 18,511 square feet. It contains two ballrooms, a lounge area, two bridal suites, storage areas, offices, large bathroom facilities. If anyone remembers the old facility, the bathrooms were quite small, and the kitchen is up there. And the basement is just an employee working area, which contains coolers, storage, employee facilities, offices, mechanical, and laundry. Facility has two main entrances, which you can see on the rendering here, to each of the ballrooms. Although, there are six additional entrances and exits, two on each side, and then more around the sides in the back. The basement has one entrance, which is to the left side of the building, which there's a slope down to get into it. The building, we state, has a seating capacity of 755 seats and an occupancy number of 1,020. The basement has an occupancy of 43 people. Whenever there's an alteration to a premises that has a local license, we have to come back in front of this board, in front of the ABC, for approval of that alteration, and that's what we're here for with regard to that. We're also here for new stockholders. Again, whenever, and I tell you that holds the local licenses, changes stockholders, they have to come in front of this board for approval. Anastasia and Natalia now are the 50/50 owners of Steve's Lakeview, Inc. Previously, at one time, his mother and father owned it, but then it went to a trust where they were part owners also, they're brothers, but around the time of the fire and subsequent to it, their parents actually have moved pretty much full-time back to Greece. They reorganized a lot of their holdings, and Natalia and Anastasia now 50/50 owners of Steve's Lakeview, Inc., which is the holder again of the license. And we're just updating the officers, which state that Natalia and Anastasia are the officers for the corporation. On the old records, it still had, their father is one of the officers, and he's since come off of that. So, we're here for three approvals, the alteration of licensed premises, the new stockholders, and the new officers. In your packet, you'll see that the notice was published in the Foxborough Order as required, and we sent out registered mail the next day to all the director butters. There were no schools, churches, or hospitals 500 feet of the premises. I got a 500-foot butters list, and I had Bay Colony Dual Plan showing all property land 500 feet, and we confirmed that there were none within that area. And I think everything is in your package. That's required with the ABC filing, which is pretty thick because you have to file a whole new application listing all that information, including the leases and things like that. So, I think I'll leave that there, if you have any questions.
Thank you. Any comments, or?
Not from, not from the staff level. We are continuing to work with the, with the project itself from an inspection side. All of our inspectional services have been fully engaged with this project since day one, and that the project remains on schedule to be open sometime September. So, we are, it continues to be on, the project is continued before us on a regular basis, but so far, I've heard no concerns on the staff level.
And I did not request the, our special counsel to attend tonight. I didn't see anything that was unusual or confusing. So, I'll open up to the board with questions, comments.
Very complete, Frank. No questions.
Thank you. Anybody else?
No. Took me a while to read through it all.
Looking forward to having it reopened once again.
I think, if I may, to speak for the owners, I think they'd like to thank the town. As you can see, it was on a very fast track, and I don't think they couldn't have done it without the help of a lot of the town employees in all the departments, because they had a lot of weddings that had to be canceled, but also, they had to get this thing built as soon as possible to get up and running again. So, I think they'd like to really thank the town and, you know, all the in-town employees from all the departments.
Yeah, I got to say, the June, July, and end of July for the ZBA Planning Board and Order of Conditions, Concom was.
Was quick.
Was very quick. Anyone else on the board?
I have one question. When we make this motion, the stockholders and the new offices in direction, those have to be two separate motions, or can we combine them?
Probably three different motions, is alteration of premises, new stockholders, and new officers.
Yeah, but the second two, they have to be totally separate.
I don't know what Keegan thinks. The application states all three on the cover petition, so I think, I think all three can be done.
Under one vote.
Under one vote, and then there's a Form 43 that shows that it was for all three things.
Bill, what?
Yeah, this is more of an administrative vote more than anything, so I think it's, I think it's fine.
You can do it all, with all three?
Okay. Anybody from the audience that would like to participate? I hate to call you out, but I know you came all the way here as staff or manager. Anything you wanted to add or?
No, I just want to reiterate what Frank said, that, you know, we're just very grateful for the town's assistance in just getting us going and getting back up there quickly. We really needed it.
This is Patty Surpess, who's the general manager.
Sorry, Patty Surpess, I'm general manager.
And Kim Wallace, who's the controller. They've been giving me all the information, piles and piles.
Thanks, Patty and Kim.
Frank gets paid by the page, by the way, in these.
Wait till tomorrow. Before we close the public hearing? Hearing done. Do we have a motion? Do you close the public hearing?
I think a motion will close the public hearing.
I'll second that.
Motion made and seconded. Further discussion? All those in favor? All right. Now the hearing is closed. There's no new information. We can take discussion?
No, I think collectively, the town's looking forward to this reopening. I think the, the rendering is spectacular. It's, it's quite a building, so it's a great asset for the town. And best of luck.
Thank you.
I know the Fireman's Ball, is that gonna be the first event that is held there?
No, it will be the first event on September fourth. We have weddings that weekend prior. And we just thought the first, actually Friday, open was nine eleven, but that, the fight happened, but that was very appropriate.
Yeah, yeah.
Any more discussion? Do you hear a motion? In the affirmative?
To make a motion that grant the, alter the premises, the all annual alcohol beverage license, also the new officers and directors, and also new stockholders for Steve Lakeview, doing business as Lakeview Pavilion.
Okay, motion made, seconded.
Seconded.
Motion made and seconded. Further discussion? All those in favor?
All right.
Motion carries five zero. Thank you very much.
Good luck.
Thank you.
Good luck. Okay, being seven thirty-five, we have a seven twenty-five public hearing. If we could read that into the record? And then if there's any representatives from Red Robin that would wanna come up to the table?
Board of Selectmen acting as the local licensing authority pursuant to Mass. General Law, Chapter one thirty-eight, will conduct a public hearing on Tuesday, June twenty-third, two thousand and fifteen, beginning at approximately seven twenty-five PM, Foxborough High School Media Center, South Street, on the application change of location of an annual all-alcoholic beverages license for Red Robin International, Inc., doing business as Red Robin, America's gourmet burgers and spirits. Two oh one Patriot Place, Foxborough, Mass. Manager, Robert Zahar. All interested parties are welcome to attend.
All right, so same protocol. If we could hear from the applicant and then the town manager if there's any questions. And again, I did not ask the special counsel to appear on this one. If you could just introduce yourself for the record?
Hello, everyone. Andrew Upden, representing Red Robin International. With me is Patrick Cartier, the acting manager. What we are proposing tonight is to move Red Robin across Patriot Place. The landlords have decided to build a hotel on the spot where they are already, where they're next to Old Navy. So there's an open spot all the way on the other side, across, across the, the way, next to the healthcare center. So we'll hand out a little map so you can see exactly where it is, in Patriot Place.
That's the former tastings corner?
Yes, exactly. You're right. It's not gonna be very different, a little more of a modern feel since this one was started in two thousand and eight. It'll have fairly new finishes, but it'll be approximately the same size, same menu, same concept. It is expected to be a little bit busier, just given the volume they've been doing and the location. So it will generate, we hope, up to forty-five more full-time employees to be hired in the new location. It's approximately the same square footage, same occupancy. We have some renderings of more or less what it will look like on the inside. These are the standard renderings, so some of these will be tweaked to fit the, the actual space. So other than that, it is currently being built out. We took the opportunity to meet with Chief O'Leary last week to discuss any concerns he might have. And other than that, we're glad to answer any questions.
Thank you.
One for me. Is this just taking over the tasting footprint or is it also taking over square footage of the adjoining site?
Yes, Olympia Sports.
We're taking that too?
Uh, we're taking half of Olympia Sports as well.
Okay.
Bill, did you wanna add anything from the town's perspective?
No, I know that this is part of a, a, a much bigger project, of course, as, as Andrew Counsel had indicated, that the, it's a redevelopment phase of, of Patriot Place that will add more, more hotel rooms to the, to the, to the complex, which in turn will generate more, more traffic unto itself. That whole area, that whole alleyway leading into the, into the stadium is actually becoming a much more of a, a true restaurant and entertainment area. And this is what'd actually be complimentary to what's being established there. So I think from our perspective, it's, it's probably, and that's, it's a family-oriented restaurant. So there, I think it's a good balance for, for what's there as well. So I think, generally speaking, I think it's probably a good, a good fit.
Thank you. And where I see Chief O'Leary here, I'm not asking you to speak, but where you were mentioned, do you have anything to add or take away from what was said? And if you do, can I? You have to.
I get him a wireless microphone.
No, I met with the applicant team as well as with Brian Early, the Patriot Place manager. I reviewed the plans and went over the operation. Since Red Robin has opened in our community, there haven't been any significant public safety issues there. The audience, a draw is families looking for some fun and, you know, food that is affordable. And it will be a good fit for that particular area to encourage families to walk through and come down into the area. I see no problems with the change in location or continuing the licensing.
Great. Thank you. Appreciate it. Any questions or comments from the board?
Yeah, on the application, lists Robert Zahar as the manager and you said you're the acting manager. Is Robert still in the picture or?
No, Mr. Zahar has moved on and Patrick has taken over. We were not able to do the timing so that we could qualify him tonight as the new manager. But we have gone ahead and filled out the paperwork and are prepared to file it almost immediately.
So any approval that we have tonight would still have the manager as Mr. Zahar, correct?
And it'll be a separate meeting, timing of that?
Yeah, we wanted to come all at once, but we just couldn't get all the paperwork.
So it'll be a change in manager coming up?
Then will be a change in manager coming up very shortly.
Probably in July. Is it realistic to assume that? July, August?
Yes, I got almost all the paperwork ready.
And when is the actual construction and anticipated?
Construction's going on now. They wanna open on the eighteenth.
Eighteenth of July?
Yeah, so it's, they're in there hustling.
Okay, any other questions or comments from the board?
Yeah, on the outdoor patios, you're showing according to the furniture plan, approximately sixty to seventy seat occupancy?
Yes.
And how often is that patio gonna be open? Is it just seasonal or is it?
It's mainly seasonal, yes, for events and then seasonal anywhere from, we usually open it Memorial Day up until Labor Day and close it.
Now, is that, is that included in your total occupancy, the patios?
Um, it, it is. It's included in the total occupancy for planning purposes, but of course, we haven't had an inspection yet, so. A bit depends on what they say.
But this, this plan is the one that's going to the ABCC for approval, correct?
Yep.
Okay.
Anyone else on the board?
Just, Jim, you understand the question, Counsel. Obviously, if, if there's a change in the occupancy, that, that needs to be clear so the board. So when they, when they're, you're approving a patio area, that's, that's an extension of the existing license premise. So, so it's clear that that is the sixty thou, sixty, the sixty additional occupants or so?
They have a total of two eighty-six.
Two eighty-six.
Yeah, but it was unclear if that was including the.
Yes, so interior of the restaurant, we sit two oh eight, I believe, so that would be the.
Okay, correct.
Just as long as the occupancies are consistent on all the paperwork.
Right. And the only point I was making is, you know, based on the inspectors or the constructions, it could vary by a couple here and there. We're just waiting to see, but as he said, that's where we're at.
So what we're, okay, today is the change of location. It's not the fun. They have to come back, but they, if they change the occupancy for an alteration of premises in.
Right. If they, if they do change the occupancy, right, the occupancy is the same essentially, what you're saying. And then, and then you'll obviously have to come back for the, for the, for the manager as well.
Yes, of course.
And I think probably some of this concern, a year or so ago, there was a restaurant that built according to this plan and it was inspected according to something else. And then it was kind of out of our hands because the ABCC, we, we didn't have the authority to say yes or no because it wasn't the plan that was presented to us, which was the final plan that was built. And it caused a little anxiety on opening day.
Understandable.
All right, any other questions, comments? Anyone from the audience, public? Do I have a motion to close the hearing?
Make a motion and we close the public hearing?
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Any more discussion? All those in favor? Motion carries five zero. Discussion? Hearing done. Do I have a, hear a motion in the affirmative?
Yeah, I make a motion, we approve the change of location of the all annual and annual all-alcohol beverage license for Red Robin International.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
All right.
Motion carries five zero. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much as well.
You wanna grab those presentation boards? As it being seven forty-four, we have a public hearing scheduled for seven forty for the NPS LLC for ACDC Rock Concert. Can we read that into the hearing? And if there's any representatives that wanna come to the table?
Board of Selectmen acting as the local licensing authority pursuant to Mass. General Law, Chapter one forty, Section one eighty-one, and Section one eighty-three A, and Chapter one thirty-six, Section four. Town of Foxborough revised general bylaws, Article five, Section six, and also stadium rules and regulations. Will conduct a public hearing on Tuesday, June twenty-third, two thousand and fifteen, beginning at approximately seven forty PM in the Foxborough High School Media Center to review the application submitted by NPS LLC for the ACDC Rock or Bus World Tour concert. This event is proposed for Gillette Stadium. Application for this event is on file at the Office of the Selectmen. All interested parties are welcome to attend.
Thank you. So if you could just introduce yourself in same protocol as the last two hearings that I saw you sitting there?
Yes, Jess. You know, so it's Gillette Stadium.
George Bell, Stadium Advisory Committee.
So we are requesting event license for the ACDC Rock or Bus Tour on Saturday, August twenty-second, with a seven thirty PM start time. As with our other shows, the parking lot and the gate time will both be to be determined, are the left blank in this application and will be determined with the public safety officials closer to the event day based on attendance. It's a Live Nation production. We had this show at the stadium in two thousand and nine. It was a Live Nation show then as well. We have Uncle Al Productions on site overseeing the production, which is the contractor that we have used historically in the past as well. The ticket prices are thirty-nine dollars, right up to a hundred and ten dollars. For the most part, it's all reserved seating. There is a small GA section, about thirty-five hundred, at the very front of the stage. And the staging itself is actually pretty extensive. It will be at Arrival Taylor Swift for the most extensive production setup that we will have this summer. We do expect to have extensive pyro as well. I don't know if they've reached out to Chief Hatfield yet, but they do know that they need to do that and with plenty of time to make sure they have all the proper licensing pulled and permitted. With that being said, we had the event in two thousand and nine. The, from a fan standpoint, we didn't have any behavioral issues. We did have some problems with sales because this is a Live Nation show and we really didn't have a lot to say with respect to how the event was marketed. They ended up having about a five thousand ticket gap. And so they, they, essentially, they sort of just papered the house and they distributed those tickets. And we found that it led to some confusion. We had a lot of people attending the event who wouldn't otherwise attend and who weren't really invested as much in the performances, just sort of getting a free ticket. The good news is that won't be a problem for the show. It's already sold out.
George, you, anything to add from the Stadium Advisory Committee's perspective?
No, well, just that Al Doughtley is the sound coordinator. And he's somebody that is very well-respected and is a listener in terms of if there are any issues. Otherwise, we intend to have members there to monitor the hotline and observe. And we voted to recommend to you for approval.
Thank you. And there's a letter also from Chief O'Leary and Pierre. Chief Hatfield as well. And the Board of Health. So anything you wanted to add?
Just the demographic of this, of this, of this type of show tend, would tend to be an older crowd.
It is.
So I think you'll, you'll probably see that it won't be as perhaps problematic in some cases as, as other shows. It is, it is a rock show, so obviously you'll, you'll have a certain type of, of, of crowd for that. But being an older crowd, I'm sure it'll be, it won't have the, the level of concern I think that perhaps some of the younger, younger bands might have. So it's, actually, I think, I think we're all surprised that it sold out as fast as it did.
Yeah, pleasantly.
Because it didn't, we didn't expect that, that we were talking maybe thirty-five, forty thousand to most.
Yeah, we did not anticipate it to sell as well as it has.
Why is that, you think?
It is. It really is. And they had.
It really is.
Well, they're, they had a new album that dropped in, in March and it's been picked up with rave reviews. And this has been a real, this has been a full-scale tour on an international level that they've launched now. And it's just had a tremendous amount of buzz around it.
Yeah.
You know, and, you know, the Patriots play some ACDC tunes as some of their, you know, entrance music. And it's been in a bunch of movies over the last few years, so it's, it's coming back. And I, I won't put ACDC on my, my phone right now, but I do have one.
Chief, did you wanna add any or take anything away from this? Euro?
Uh, my letter was.
Is that, okay, very good. Okay, any further discussion?
One question, Jess. You, you mentioned pyro techniques. Are we talking from the stage area or fireworks above the stadium?
I don't, I honestly don't know. I would guess probably both. I've seen the, just the CAD renderings of the production and it's, it's really massive. So I would guess they probably have a pretty extensive mix of stuff that will, they'll launch at the conclusion of the show and stuff that'll be interactive from the actual stage as well.
Does that take in place at any concert ever up there?
Yeah. Yep, it's not uncommon.
Do you have an approximate time of, of the sound checks when they're gonna be?
I don't, but we will. We'll definitely have it once they get closer. This past week, with Monster Jam, we ended up getting the dates a little bit in advance. And knowing that it's such a loud event, we had a press release, we issued a press release to the reporter and they were kind enough to print it. So we had that going out on Thursday as just sort of a little extra notification for the people in the community that they could anticipate noise on Friday during a more unexpected time. And so if we have that opportunity again, and we've already put in the ask, as soon as we can find out when their sound check timing will be and the extent of it, we'll do the same. Worked out well, especially this week.
Just from, from an insurance perspective too, we have worked out the details on the insurance coverages. Thank you. Getting it all figured out. And we had a little runaround the past few weeks trying to figure this all out. We got it done, so I appreciate that. And so I think that's not an issue for this show going forward. We have coverage in place from, from July four, first going forward.
So all our, our other approvals were contingent upon insurance. Right now, it's intact and there's no.
Right. We, we received the last certificates actually today.
Yes.
So, so.
Jess, it's not written in any of, any, anything. But do you still continue the policy of you have to show a ticket to get into the parking lot? So no entrance into the parking lot without showing a ticket?
Yeah, it's, it's an overarching stadium policy, yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, so any other questions from the board, comments? Anyone from the public? I see one person, Arthur Poirier, are you here for that? No? I can't resist, I've known Artie for years, his nickname is Artie the One Man Party, and he used to be in a rock band, so... Not taking, no?
I do, I do take exception to the comment about older crowd.
Hey, I'm in that crowd too, so I feel better, I can say that.
It's more mature, it's just more mature.
Mature, there you go.
Seasoned.
Seasoned crowd, seasoned crowd, thank you.
Experience.
So, I see no more intelligent comments coming from the board? I have a motion to close it?
I make a motion, we close the public hearing.
I'll second that.
Motion made and seconded, any more discussion? All those in favor? All right, discussion? Um, do I hear a motion in the affirmative?
I make a motion, we approve the license for the ACDC Rock or Bust World Tour Concert at Gillette Stadium.
Mr. Chairman, you want, you want to make sure though that this license also includes, all the licenses going for concerts now include the, the, uh, condition about the, um, about the, the, the timing of that, where it doesn't go exceed the certain time. So we want to make sure that that's part of your motion here tonight as well, so we include that language.
Right.
So we don't have the...
If, if we don't, I'm not saying we, we shouldn't, but if we don't, is, is that... If we don't condition it for that, they can't do it anyways, correct, without...
Right, it has to be conditioned, because, because it's not a bylaw, it's, it's a condition of a license.
God, that's right, okay, you're right, okay.
It is in the license condition.
It is in the license condition, but I just want to make sure that everybody's fully aware of that, there's no surprises about that. That's, that's, that's going to all look licenses going, all the conditions of the, uh, concerts going forward.
So that has to be part of the motion then, as well as insurance, the reg- I mean...
Yeah, I think you're right, if it was part, if it was a bylaw, you wouldn't have the motion.
That's right, or you could, or you could say, you could probably refer to it as, as conditioned in the license itself, uh, uh, including all conditions outside of the license.
Is the insurance in this license?
I believe it is, uh, it's part, it's part of the conditions, correct?
Yep, number three.
I got that. Okay, so then I would like to make a motion, we accept the application with all the conditions in the license for the ACDC Rock or Bust World Tour Concert at Gillette Stadium.
I'll second that.
Motion made and seconded with conditions. Any more discussion? All those in favor? All right, motion carries five zero.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, and Jess, are you all set with the Taylor Swift license? Because we're all set with it.
Yes.
Okay, everything's all figured out?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, great.
All good, thank you.
All right, thank you, okay.
Yeah, that concludes our public hearings, next on the agi- uh, item, agenda is the Board of Selecting item, the approval of the Estapo agreement for Gillette Stadium.
Uh, just, uh, by way of, of introducing that item, this is a, a request made by, um, by the craft organization. They are actually in the process of, of refinancing the stadium, and so as part of that, they have to, um, they have to, we have to, they have to have evidence for their financing company that, uh, that they are in full compliance with their con- terms and conditions, um, and so it, in terms of the lease conditions that we have, so we, um, and this was given to me, it, it has to be signed by the board, so, uh, I can, I can tell you that, uh, we, all the issues that we had during the past weeks have been worked out, and so I'm, I'm comfortable recommending it that you sign it tonight.
Very good. Any questions on that, on the, uh, process?
Uh, insurance aside, uh, all the fees have been paid up to date?
Uh, to my knowledge, they have. Uh, I, uh, I, there's al- there's always different timings of when...
Right.
Those things get paid, but, uh, to my knowledge, everything is up to date.
Plus details, lease details and stuff?
Details come in at different times throughout the year, so...
But they're not at all.
But we're not, we're not in the, we're not in the, in the major areas and that, to my knowledge.
And Randy's okay with this? He's scrubbed it?
Yes, yeah, and we, we, Randy and I met on this, uh, uh, two weeks ago, so...
All right, so that, that, I don't think that's a formal motion or a vote, I think you'd need a sig- is it one signature or?
Uh, it's, it's the board, it's, it's signed by the board, so, uh, it's just a, a motion, it would be a motion to approve, uh, the Estapo agreement.
All right, so do I hear a motion, a motion in the affirmative to approve the Estapo agreement? That is dated, it's dated today, uh...
Dated June...
Executed this day on June two thousand and fifteen.
I make a motion to approve the Estapo agreement as of June twenty-third, two thousand and fifteen.
I'll second that.
Motion made and seconded, further discussion on the agreement?
Yeah, one question, what was supposed to be in Exhibit A? There's an exhibit back there that says that.
I think that's the lease.
Lease.
It's a lea- that's your lease itself, right, lease agreement. That's the full agreement, it's all, yeah.
All right, motion made, seconded, any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? All right, motion carries five zero.
So we just, we just need to get the board to sign that before you, as well, as well, you pack it tonight, thank you.
Uh, and the next one, there's two items under this.
Yeah.
A couple minutes early, but the, uh, commercial parking regulation, uh, we provided a, uh, some revisions to the regulations, and then the actual commercial parking permits, which we have to act on before the end of June.
Let me just, uh, I think by way of introduction of this particular item, we, the board, where we called the last meeting, we had a number of licenses, uh, placed before the board, uh, for, for approval. Some had conditions that were still pending, uh, there are, there are a couple that still have some, some planning board approvals pending, or have they been approved, I believe, in some cases, there's still one that's pending.
Just one, Ross.
Just, just one, is, that's, that's going to be the twenty-fifth, and that's the, uh, the one at sixteen Washington Street. But the others have, actually were approved, um, so, um, so those, those, uh, those actions are no longer pending. But the, the major issue first, uh, which, which is actually item two of this, of this issue, uh, was the, was the licenses themselves, was the conditions, uh, the commercial license, uh, parking, commercial regulations, which we met during the course of the past two weeks to update and, um, and review with all the internal staff as well as the working committee that we had, uh, established for, for working on this. And, um, we went through it, made several changes, uh, we put some teeth behind the issue of people who violate the, uh, the regulations with respect to parking more vehicles than they should be, or they're licensed for, or if they have no license at all, they'll certainly be penalized for that purpose as well. The, um, the language, um, has, was circulated to, not only internally, but also externally to the, uh, the various lot owners. We actually held a meeting at, at the public sa- in the McGinty Room at the Public Safety Building on Monday. Uh, we had a lot of input from, from various, uh, lot owners. Uh, there were very few, if any, changes, or maybe one or two changes at the most. And, um, and then we circulated them, recirculated after the changes were made, so that they all, all had them, and I was informed this morning that we did, we had no further comments from the lot owners themselves. So they filed it, found the document acceptable as presented to you tonight, and, uh, what you see tonight was exactly what was submitted to them as well, so...
Um, I was at that meeting, and we, um, we spoke about, um, the problems with not designating the stadium licensed area from the poss- for, for commercial enterprises, um, the parking lot, the parking spaces used for people going in and out of stores, commercial.
Yeah, not just the stadium, but it was everywhere.
Right, but that's, I don't see anything in here, even, even a line that says they should attempt to make, to make a delineation of the, of the, uh, different spaces.
Actually, I thought that we did address that.
I couldn't see, I mean, I read it quickly and I couldn't see it. And the only reason, the only reason I'm saying that is because, um, when, any, any license, any parking, um, lot after nineteen ninety-four has to go before the board of, uh, the planning board...
Right.
For approval, and there were, they did have the hearings, and three of the four, um, people who applied, uh, did get approved. And they gave them an order of conditions, and one of the conditions is all approved spaces, and these are whatever the spaces are licensed for. "All approved spaces shall be outlined on the ground with line paint or similar product. These spaces shall be clearly delineated prior to each stadium event when parking will occur." And, and if it's, if it's a condition for the licenses after nineteen ninety-four, then I, I think it should be in the regulations that the spaces are delineated. Which are your licensed spaces and which are your commercial spaces? Because that was one of the problems, when state, state police came in and they just counted the cars, and there were some people that were over, that were overparking, but legitimately, they weren't overparking, or they weren't overparking as much as they said they were, because they had to have spaces for their, for their, um, customers going in and out of their stores. So, I mean, we discussed this at more than, in more than one meeting, and it's not, there's nothing in here.
I think what we were, we were looking at was the fact that it, it's, I think that when we, when we get into a lot of discussion about that yesterday, I think what we finally agreed on was that, that whatever the amount of the lot spaces are, if there is, uh, if it's, if the maximum number of spaces has to be delineated, and from that space, we have, there has to be the, the indication of how many spaces are, are used to be for, for regular business purposes only, and not for, not for, to be used for the, uh, and that will be part of their, their submission for their, their license itself. We, what, it, and, and when we talk about that's in twenty, where it says all vehicles should be parked in accordance with the parking lot plans on file with the Town of Foxborough, and I think that's how we, we tried to address that.
So that's where we're going to address it?
Right, that's the way we're going to address it.
So someone doing an inspection will have the parking lot plan in hand?
Yes, right, and I think that's how we, uh, because that was the most practical way we could do it, um, given that, because yeah, the, there are really three ways in which we look at these, one is that there were clearly delineated spaces for regular business, then there was clearly delineated spaces for event parking, and then there's some grays in between, which some, some will be moved in and out because of, of the nature of, of the, of the business that day. For instance, if you, if you have a weekend, there are, there are holiday season, you may have more spaces that you want to use for business, especially in, in and around Patriot Place, or some of the, uh, spaces at, uh, some of the other businesses in the area.
Wouldn't it be better just to put the maximum number of spaces available in the lot, irregardless of, of why they're there?
Well, the, the issue is, it's, it's more of a, of a taxing issue, because the state collects on each of those, those spaces that are, that are rented, so, and then it, then it becomes, then it, so that's why it becomes a, an issue that has to be regulated to a degree.
But also, now, we have, um, there's a mechanism in here for fining, uh, when you overpark at, to the tune of a hundred dollars per overparked vehicle, and you want to make sure that if you have like a hundred and fifty spaces and the state police come up and count a hundred and seventy-five, well, you could conceivably have a two hundred and fif- twenty-five hundred dollar fine, unless you prove...
Right.
That those are commercial, so how do you prove it? Do you prove it that, oh, okay, on the plan, I have a hundred and fifty licensed spaces and I have twenty-five, uh...
That are used for, for, for regular business purposes.
It was just too narrow.
That's the only way you could do it, really, I mean, that's the only way we could do it.
Now, who, who's ultimately in charge of enforcing all this? Is it the state police, is it Bill Casper?
It's actually listed, it's in, listed in the regulation, it's, it's a combination of the chief, the building commissioner, the buyer chief.
It seems like nobody has any ownership, and it's just passed it to the next guy.
We, what, that was the, the point of controversy the last year, I guess, because the state police actually did a inspection, and so what, what came, what came out of that was that we're going to take ownership of it, and we're going to, we're going to utilize, we're going to use our, utilize our own personnel to do that. Chief, uh, maybe Chief, uh, O'Leary should speak to that issue.
In the past, uh, very often the inspections were being done by the building commissioner and deputy chief back. An issue had come up that was brought to my attention by the state police captain that's responsible for the traffic management along Route One corridor, and he offered, uh, as part of, you know, assistance, to have his staff give us a better indication of where people were parking and the numbers of cars in the different lots. Uh, based on those counts, we discovered some people appeared to have overparked. And as a result, uh, we did follow up in those particular lots, and with a letter, a caution letter about, uh, the potential of being disciplined by this board, and from that, uh, I know I'll be more directly involved with the, um, sort of overlook on the lots and the cars that are parked there. Uh, and it includes different lots the stadium operate as well, although their number is much greater, I think it exceeds thirteen thousand licensed spots, uh, just to make sure that every lot is examined fairly. Uh, but actually, if you took a look in the regulations, uh, there are three different players, uh, my office, the fire service, as well as the building commissioner.
Thank you.
And, um, number eighteen, uh, as far as the signage, um, I think it should include the max number of vehicles allowed. Just on that, on that sign, so when, when the inspections are being done, people, you know, whoever's doing the inspection can say, all right, well, there's supposed to be, you know, forty cars in here, and clearly, you know, without even counting, there's, there's more than forty cars. We have to make up a, a two-by-two sign anyway.
It's a pleasure of the board to meet.
No, it's a good idea.
Number twenty also addresses signs. Eighteen twenty.
This one here?
Yeah.
Oh, this one.
That's only, um...
So the one, so the one we're using.
This one, okay. I see no problem with that, it's a good idea.
I mean, that way he doesn't, you know, whoever's doing the inspection doesn't have to find the attendant, have them pull out the permit and verify how many, how many cars are supposed to be parked in there.
Well, I mean, secondarily though, if someone's doing the inspection, they have the site, um, plan in hand. They can, they can actually see the spaces that have been licensed, as opposed to the spaces that aren't. So for a retail establishment, um, they will have submitted a plan that shows the licensed spaces, they'll also show, uh, spaces that are not licensed for regular retail activity. So somebody doing the inspection would have that in hand, I trust.
I don't, I don't think so, I don't think, uh, the deputy chief or, um, Chief O'Leary is going to be walking around with, uh, with plans of parking lots as, as they're going through.
Can I address?
Yeah, absolutely, please.
Item number eighteen came about, uh, when we started to look at the parking lot operation. As the old stadium was taken over by the craft group, the team started to approve. Prior to that, the satellite lots were usually named for a particular owner, like the Frederico Lot or the Kritzman Lot, uh, up and down Route One, and in order to standardize the process, we used the street address for that particular parcel, so that it would be easier for staff, whether it was my people, fire service, state police, to be able to respond to lots when you had problems in those lots. And that's why the number system became a requirement, so first responders could get to different areas. I'm not against having a number on the sign, uh, but I'm more concerned with making sure that we know which lots are having a problem, so we can get to them.
Yeah, but to Dave's point, if you had like a lower right-hand corner, you're going to have like, you know, one fifty, and then if you, if you have like a commercial enterprise like, like, uh, Route One Liquors or something, say they had, would they have like fifteen spaces that they use commercially, we're going to have one seventy-nine, which is what they're licensed for, so one seventy-nine slash fifteen, so quickly you can go, okay, that's, they have one se- a hundred seventy-nine licensed, and also they'll have fifteen commercial, I think that's a good idea.
Yeah, just like saying maximum capacity of one seventy-nine.
Yeah, I think that's a good idea.
I, I think we're almost, because condition eighteen, I read it wrong, when it says the number assigned by the fire chief, but that's lot number seven, not two hundred spaces. Item number twenty says, in accordance to the site plan at the town, so I don't think the fire chief or you walk around with site plans from the town, correct?
Uh, in the past, no.
Well...
The chief, did the...
We'll have to review the plans, and let me be very clear, there's no way we can do every single lot and every single car at the same event. This is going to be...
Correct, oh, yeah, yeah.
A multi-event process, um...
Yeah, they'll be rolling inspections.
So you'll be doing different lots on different days, and taking a look at those plans ahead of time, making some photocopies... of time, making some photocopies, stopping and talking to the people there.
Okay.
And just find out, okay, where are your employees parked? Where are your retail? Mr. Polo brought up a good point.
Yep.
Some of them have ongoing restaurant businesses that do have people appear, Ron Young up at the Lafayette House, Dimitri, although I don't believe he has a license for parking at this point, but, you know, you have other customers.
Well, even, even like Greg Spears' place up at Maystock.
Right.
They have parking, but they also have tenants.
Absolutely.
During games, parked because they're, they're tenants there and they have friends come. So, I mean, but if you had, if you, if you had his sign with his, the number sign, and then on the bottom, just, you know, a hundred and fifty slash twenty-two, you know, quick and dirty. That's, you know, quicker reference. I think that's a good idea.
So it sounds like we have general consensus on number eighteen to revise it with a note for the, for the maximum amount allowed on the sign. Anything else on the, there's two items on here. One is the approval of the permits, but let's finish off the permit regulations anymore?
I have a question that probably pertains to the changes and I think Mr. Kaspari might need to answer it. I know all the licenses that went out, where the, the application said, no more additional parking, no more additional parking. And on the ones that we're about to approve, there's a couple with additional parking. Where are we on that?
So, Bill, if you wouldn't mind, I also wanted to make sure you guys got, there was a memo that Bill Kaspari sent, our building inspector, this afternoon, dated June twenty-third, and it gives a brief history of who, what, where, when, and how the permit process evolved from nineteen ninety-four. Did you guys all get that?
Yeah.
Mr. Mitchell, I should address your, your question. Brief history, the temporary parking lots were zoned in in May of nineteen ninety-four. Was silent before that. I have no, I've researched records and I can only give you my opinion that those lots came into existence as a matter of a license from Board of Selectment to fulfill a need for the stadium parking because they didn't have adequate parking on their lot. That's, was the, how the satellite lots came into being. After ninety-four, they became temporary parking lots serving stadium events, became regulated through the planning board with a special permit. So technically, anybody that received a license, applied for a license after that date, should have went to the planning board for a special permit. That's why you have some applicants that, that have that permit. I don't know if all of them do, but I had to draw a line in the sand. This is where we're going to start now and have specific guidelines of what you need to do to get an increase. Lots that were established by license prior to that May ninety-four annual town meeting are considered non-conforming landings. If you're going to alter that, which would be a request to increase the parking, you need to go to the zoning board for a special permit. If your lot was established after ninety-four, you need to go to the planning board, this is what laid out in the zoning, for a special permit. Special permits have to be renewed annually. So if somebody's requesting an increase, they go in front of the planning board first, if they get their approval from them, then they would come to you for that approval.
That's after, after ninety-four lots?
That, that would be after ninety-four. Prior to that, they come to you with, with a special permit from the zoning board for that increase.
Pre-existing non-conforming due to zoning.
There's two boards that are going to over, three boards that are going to oversight this, zoning or planning, and in both cases, you'll be oversight. So it's just, this is the process, it applies to everybody, and it tells you pretty much where you're at. Most of these were there prior to ninety-four.
Bill, can I just ask you, this is a question that came up at the last meeting. It's kind of the chicken or the egg. Do we, can we approve a contingent upon planning board or zoning board if it was, or do they need to come?
I put that in the letter. They need to go to those boards first, then come to you.
Okay.
You know, again, if they, if, if they know exactly what's expected, I, I think, you know, it's much easier. You can get that approval, but you need to go in front of the board and that, it becomes a little hard sometimes, so. But you're right, but this time we'll put the chicken before the egg.
Chairman, just, just to be clear for tonight's action, there is only, well, there's only really one applicant that's asking for an increase, that, the rest of them have all been approved, other than that one, which is still pending, which will be done this week.
Correct.
And so, I think the board can approve his application for, for a parking lot up to the existing number that is approved. And if he gets approved for additional lot, uh, spaces, he'll have to go back in a subsequent meeting to ask for those approvals. Now, one of the things that we did want to get into was approving, saying that there is no, there's a moratorium on spaces, in the sense that it's, it's sort of a free enterprise type of thing, that if, if someone has the space and the planning board approves the space, therefore, then they, then the person should have the ability to, to rent the space. But the question is us to, like, because right now, we, we've determined internally that we think we have an excess of spaces, that we don't need the additional spaces right now. But, but having said that, if somebody wants to market their own spaces and they have the, and it's approved by the planning board, then who are we to say no? I mean, it's really a free enterprise type of thing.
Yeah, and some people may prefer to park further away from the stadium, you know, walk to the stadium, walk back to the stadium to get out a little easier.
Right. Okay. So, thank you, Bill.
Thank you.
Thanks for the update, Bill.
So in summary, all of the applications that are in front of us now, with the exception of one, have received either the ZBA or the planning board
Right.
Approval. They need to be approved before the end of June. And then the only one is that one lot that we can approve that for the existing number that they had, that they're applying for and nothing more.
Right.
And that's sixteen Washington Street?
Correct.
And did we discuss this the last meeting? Can we approve all of these at once or do we have to?
We've done that in the past. Unless, unless something's different, we can pull it out. And the, the last question I have that kind of relates to all these approvals, these are all going to be approved based on the revised regulations. So item number one tonight, we have to finish that first.
Yeah.
Whatever approval or, or changes, we finish that, and then all of these will be either approved or denied based on that, new regulations. Makes sense?
It does. And Bill, you said all of the parking lot applicants have seen the new rules and regulations? They're all a hundred percent on board?
Right. And we, we actually circulate, we, we met with them all, we circulated the information to them, we made the changes based on the meeting that we had, circulated it back to them again, and we heard no further comments as of today. So the only change with, if, if the board agrees collectively that you want to change number eighteen to include a designation of the amount of spa- of maximum lot capacity and any other spaces that can be used for commercial purposes, that would be a change which I would have to circulate to them as well. So, I don't know how you want to proceed on that. If you want to approve the regulations as they're presented to you tonight and then, then, then circulate that change as an amendment.
I would say approve it with our condition of changing that.
Okay.
I don't think it would, I, I don't think the, the parking lot owners would object to that. It's just a matter of taking a magic mac and writing numbers down on the corner, you know.
I mean, I'll be honest with you, had we not have the, had this issue last year with people overparking, it's hard to say, don't put that number on the sign because there's, there's a need for it, so.
Yeah, and it's a simple.
Just a procedural question, that's all it is.
All right, so the first item is the approval of the, hold up here, the parking regulations with revision dated. Why don't we make a, why don't we make the motion and give it a today's date?
Yeah. Make a motion that we approve the commercial parking lot regulations with the exception of number eighteen, we have them add the maximum occupancy number to the sign that they have to post.
Along with any other, with any other vehicles used for, spaces used for commercial purposes.
Yep. Yep. And these new regulations dated June twenty-third, two thousand and fifteen.
So the motion was to approve the regulations dated June twenty-third with the one change to item number eighteen?
Yep.
Second?
Second.
Motion made, seconded, further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries five zero. Now in front of us, we have the applications for the two thousand fifteen season.
So we're going to hold lot sixteen and approve it at the one seventy-seven?
Right, you would, you would approve it with the one seventy-seven spaces?
No, that's the increase.
That's the increase.
One thirty-three.
One thirty-three. Yeah, I apologize. For, for, you approve it at the one thirty-three level pending for any further action by the board, by the planning board.
Okay. Do I hear a, a motion to that effect?
Yeah, like to make a motion that we approve all the commercial parking lot applications as their spaces are now. Before us, effective July first.
Effective.
July first, two thousand and fifteen.
I'll second that.
Don't you want to desert, don't you want to specify lot sixteen?
Well, they're currently at one thirty-three, so they're not giving any issues.
But just to have it, that the, it was lot sixteen that we were concerned about.
Should we just maybe pull that one out, go them all and then that one separately?
No, I think, I think it's okay.
Okay, so where are we at now?
The one sixteen remains not increased. Lot sixteen remains, we're proving it.
You can, you can approve the, the numbers as licensed, but noting that lot sixteen will, there'll be an increase, possibly an increase at a, at a later date or, or something. You know, we, we are, we are approving it for one hundred and thirty-three spaces.
Right.
Not the one seventy-seven, one thirty-three.
Right. So I think, so I think your motion is correct, that if you, if you, you're approving the, the spaces that as, that are, that have been verified and approved to this date. And that any, and that lot sixteen has, has the potential of being increased at a later date.
I'm, I'm only thinking about like down the road, when somebody wants to look at the meeting minutes. I think it should be specified that lot sixteen.
Can you read back the motion?
Motion by Chris Mitchell to approve all the commercial parking lot applications as their spaces are now before the board, effective July first, two thousand and fifteen. Second.
There's a one exception to that because it's, it's presented to you right now at one seventy-seven.
Right.
So I think you need to.
Okay.
So, yeah, I think, to be clear.
I make a motion that we rescind my original motion.
So I would, I would approve them all with that one exception, pull that one out and do a separate motion for that one, that one.
Okay, motion was made to rescind it, seconded?
Yeah.
Second?
I'll be clear.
All those in favor? Further discussion? All those in favor rescinding the motion Chris made?
Aye.
Motion carries five zero. Do we have a motion again?
I make a motion that we take out lot sixteen. Do I have to do that? No.
I would just say, I would, I would, my recommendation to you would be to make a motion to approve the lots as presented, the commercial parking lots for fiscal year two thousand and sixteen as presented, with the exception of lot sixteen.
Okay. I make, I make a motion, we approve the parking lot licenses for fiscal year sixteen with exception, fiscal year two thousand and fifteen with the exception of lot sixteen.
Two thousand and sixteen.
Two thousand and sixteen.
This stuff in July.
Too many lots, too many numbers, sorry. I make a motion, we approve the commercial parking lots effective July first, two thousand and fifteen through June thirtieth, two thousand and sixteen, with the exception of lot number sixteen.
Second.
Motion carries, seconded, further discussion on that motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries five zero. Do we have a motion on lot sixteen? An affirmative?
I make a motion that we approve lot sixteen with the existing one hundred and thirty-three spaces, effective July first, two thousand and fifteen, ending June thirtieth, two thousand and sixteen.
Second.
Motion made, a seconded, further discussion? Everyone happy with that motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries five zero.
Great, thank you. Sorry for the confusion.
No. Anyone else realize we all have three striped shirts on?
Yeah, Dave didn't get the memo today.
I got the memo.
All right, so being eight, thanks, Bill and chief.
Thanks, guys.
Being eight-ten, a little bit behind. Let's do this, if you don't mind, because there's some visitors from eight-thirty, we're just about at eight-thirty, so let's bump up the discussion on the Fails Place lot, a through-way sign, if that's okay with the board?
Mm-hmm.
So in our packet, there was a petition, and it looks like they're all, it was signed by Fails Place residents, and a letter that was sent to the board prior that was attached to it requesting some consideration for some signage because of a increased traffic through that neighborhood. So, I see Roger Hill here. So you, this is your letter and you saw the backup with it in the petition?
Yeah.
Okay, do you want to present your thoughts on this?
Yeah. You're well aware of Fails Place. It's, it's quite a narrow road and it has a right-angle bend in it and it's all residential. And what's happened there is whenever there's a backup from the common on Main Street, southbound, they use it as a cut-through. And it's dangerous because it's so narrow and it has that right-angle bend. And so the residents did petition to see if we could control some of that traffic through here. At first, I, I suggested that we might do a no-through-way sign, but that's not correct because it is a through-way as such. So I looked up the manual and I found two other potential good signs to put up there. One of them is local traffic only, and that also is a black and white regulatory sign. And the other one was through-traffic, let's see. Yeah, whatever my, my quote says there. Local traffic only? Local traffic only, yeah. And there are lots of no-through-traffic signs in different places, not in Foxborough, but I've seen a lot of them, and I know people ignore them at times, but they're black and whites and they are enforceable if the police decide they want to enforce them. We don't need both. One or the other is adequate because either one could be enforced. You, if you pull somebody over who's going through there and they're not a local person, then they violated the sign.
What, what would you define local?
Local would be residents of Fails Place or Gilmore Street or, you know, somewhere in the neighborhood, I would say.
Okay.
It's a, it's a discretionary kind of a thing on the part of a police officer, really.
I would say the no-through-traffic is a little more, because local, I mean, we're all local, you know, so I would say that the no-through-traffic would be a, a better sign, in my opinion, on that. And I witnessed this Monday night, sitting in traffic, and, and somebody behind me turned on the Falls Place, up over the sidewalk, burned rubber and probably hit Lezowski's fence. I mean, it was unbelievable how aggressive the person was, so.
Now, before we continue discussing with the board, are you, would you, do you want to speak on the issue? Are you part of the petition or?
Um, I wrote the letter.
Okay, do you, do you want to come up and?
Sure.
You guys were here for quite a while. You guys were here for quite a while.
You said old musician, right?
Fifty-eight, C D C guy.
You got that.
Took exception to the word old, by the way, so...
If you, if you could, just introduce yourself for the record and your, your name and address.
Sure, I'm Geraldine Lezowski, eleven Fails Place.
Okay.
I'm Art Poria, twenty-five Gilmore Street.
Welcome.
Thank you. So my second letter didn't mention putting a sign on Gilmore as it did on the first letter.
Mm-hmm.
But what will happen is, if we get the signage on our street, they're just gonna do the same thing on Gilmore. And they're just a small, narrow, a street as well, with a lot of children.
Isn't the Montessori school on, on Gilmore?
The Montessori is on Gilmore.
So this is...
But they're done, they're, they're done, their traffic is done twelve, twelve-thirty in the afternoon.
Twelve-thirty, one o'clock, yeah.
So going from, and I, and I looked at, so Fails is about a thousand feet from the rotary, and I've seen it backed up.
Past that.
Yep.
Yep.
So you get Fails, but then you've got Gilmore, then you've got Granite, then you've got Rock Hill. So my, that would be my question, if you put signs on Fails, you're gonna be a nuisance to Gilmore because they're gonna pass that. And then if you put it on Gilmore, then they're gonna pass that and they're gonna go to Granite. So at, at what point do we look at a broader, you know, the poor guy at the end's gonna get all the traffic because he wasn't here petitioning a sign?
But Rock Hill doesn't get you off coming through the common, and if you make the common, the right at the common off Main Street, the left is usually easy to get to, it's not a, not a situation, unless, unless Central Street is backed up or, or Mechanic Street. But that seldom happens, southbound. Occasionally when the charter school lets out, Jim.
See, I would say Granite Street would be the last one of the, the domino effect.
Fails, Gilmore and Granite?
Yeah.
Right.
So anyone living in that neighborhood could still get home because they're not through-traffic?
Right.
And they're not, and they're local.
Right.
Now Roger, is it impossible to make them one ways, or, or rearrange the traffic flow so it makes it annoying to try to push through there?
Um, I, I wouldn't recommend that. The, um, the owners will find inconvenience with that, I think. I, I would try something like this first, and if we don't have success with it, then we could look at one way.
I was, I was thinking the one way, but then if you're in that neighborhood, you've gotta sit through that traffic, go to the rotary, go to the fire station, come back around.
I'm just thinking that, you know, that the narrowness of the road almost says, boy, you know, two-way, two-way traffic.
In place is only sixteen feet wide, which is hard to get two vehicles past each other. Uh, and Fails, I just paved, and that's attractive to them too, you know, when they see the new pavement, they, they...
'Cause I mean, signs are great, but people who are going to...
They're gonna do it anyway.
Ignore them anyway.
No matter what we do, you're gonna get some people cutting through.
I'm just starting to think of...
But that's been the history of Foxborough Common, it's, it's not a new thing. It's just, we, we seem to have more traffic today, and we do, we really do have more traffic than I can ever remember, so...
You can't enforce anything without the signage.
That's right.
That's exactly right.
You can't, at least you'll be able to enforce it now.
Yeah, the black and whites give you the power of enforcement.
In, in your letter, you said there was an officer that was parked there and saw some extraordinary...
Officer McGrath, ninety cars in less than forty minutes. He, he counted. Which, for that street is...
I think I counted six in the time it took me to get to the common on Monday afternoon, about five o'clock. And one of them going up over the sidewalk. And it didn't take me, it, it wasn't really backed up that bad.
Probably didn't take you any longer to get to the common than it did them.
No.
And it was just out of frustration?
Oh, yeah, this was major frustration, I mean...
Yeah, there was a long backup when the charter school let out.
I've seen that street, Main Street, back up to the Dairy Queen.
Oh, yeah.
To be honest with you.
Yeah, that's true.
So I made a little count tonight, twelve Fails Place has two kids. I'm concerned about the kids, we've got, we've had a new resurgence of younger kids there now. Fails Place has two, twelve Fails Place, eight Fails Place has two. Uh, I don't know the number of the house on the corner of, uh, Main and Fails, but there's three kids there. There's a house on the corner of Gilmore Street with two kids. Twenty-six Gilmore Street, whom the lady couldn't be here tonight because she's picking her mother up at the airport. She sent you a little letter here. She has four kids.
Yeah.
And the other side of her house that faces Granite has three kids. And I wanna tell ya, you stand out there, I can't get out of my driveway.
Yeah.
You stand out there when those cars are just, don't wanna bother us waiting out on Main Street. They come up Jerry Street, Fails, and then they'll come up Gilmore Street, whip around the corner. And by the time they get down to Granite Street, if they don't stand on their brakes...
Yeah.
They're gonna land in the church parking lot. And it's, it's become very dangerous. And I've been there for forty-nine years, and it's never, I've never seen anything like this up there.
Yeah.
It's, it's just, it's ridiculous. And I spoke to, I think it's Sergeant Thibodeau, up at the, uh, one of the concerts on the common. And his response to me explaining this to him was, well, we can only put a cruiser, cruiser there for a couple of minutes. Well, a couple of minutes isn't gonna do one bit of good. Something has to be done. I would, personally, I would love to see it be one-way. But if we can't go that way, then just something that tells people that they can't continue to do this.
To make cutting through as annoying as possible.
That's exactly what I mean.
Yeah. But, 'cause Roger said, it'll also be twenty-four hours a day annoying to the residents.
Well, if not, if you put certain times, I've seen plenty of, I've, I've seen plenty of signs in different towns that say one-way, say, three to six.
Yeah, I've seen those.
Yeah, that's my idea, yeah.
Is that enforceable, though?
Sure it is. If the traffic commission votes it, and, and it's in the manual, it's enforceable, and it's in the manual, so...
I, that's what I would like to see, because the youngest one across the street from me is four years old. Granted, we all look out for him, but I don't wanna be there when that first tragedy happens.
Roger, is it possible to put, uh, speed bumps in there to force traffic to go only fifteen miles an hour without wrecking their car?
No.
No?
I, I'm not a big fan of speed bumps.
Well, I know, because you have to plow.
It's not only that, it, it, they're ineffective. We, we put two speed bumps on Pace and Road, and I've, I've seen cars launch there, and I'm sure you have, Jim.
Yeah.
You live up there and you know what they do, so...
If we put the, the one-way during certain hours sign, it's still, if we have a police officer saying they'll only be there for a couple of minutes, I mean, how effective is that gonna be?
Well, one-way sign, you take, if you ta, take the risk of driving the wrong way on a one-way street, uh, and you get into an accident, you're gonna pay heavy for it. So I, I would, that's a, that's not a bad solution. It's, I, I'd still like to try the local traffic sign first.
I think that's a good idea.
And...
No-through-traffic.
And, and I, I'd do it, you know, I, we could do both signs, you know, put one, one sign on one side and one on the other, and, you know, all facing out to Main Street, so they can be seen by people coming, uh, southbound on Main Street. And I don't mind doing all three streets, 'cause we're not talking of any big money here, you know?
And, and I, and I hear what you're saying, Mr. Poria, on the one-way, but if we were going in that direction?
We get, we get a hundred calls from other streets.
I, I think we'd have to look at it first, you know, is it between seven and nine?
Yeah.
You know, when does it go, is it?
Yeah.
You know, and, and then with the risk of if you don't study it, you put them up, and then honestly, when people wanna get home and they've gotta sit in that traffic and do the loop, they're gonna cut through and...
Yeah.
So, you know, and, and I commit, I've seen what the neighbors have done out there, they put the little plastic people with the signs and the play equipment on the street just to try to stop it. And I, my office is down in that area, and yet the other issue I see is, when the people are backed up on Main Street at one forty, there's no respect for the people trying to get out of the side street.
That's right.
So you're trying to get in.
Exactly right.
You're squeezing between two cars, and then you're speeding up to take a left, and you can't see the oncoming, so I don't know if you, there's some thought about a sign saying do not block in this section, that, you know, I don't, I don't wanna pepper the whole place with signs, but I see that as an equal problem for you guys trying to get out, especially on, on Fails.
Well, just to give you an idea, the people that cut through there, they do that, obviously, for a purpose. And there was a big hole in the street in front of my house, so I went up to, I was, I was, got a bag of coal patch and fixed it, and put two cones there, so it could hide it, it ran over.
Yeah.
Well, I, I think, I think signage is, is great, but no matter what signage you put in, if it's not...
Some people are gonna violate it.
If you're not gonna enforce it, it's useless.
But the only signage that is enforceable is black and whites and some orange and whites, and that's it.
So we'd, we'd be willing to, for a period of time, do a, a no-through-traffic sign and see if we can get the chief to put, put a cruiser there for, you know, extended period of time, not a few minutes, but during, during, um, rush hour, kinda see if we can get the message out that, you know, we have signage and we're gonna enforce it. Try and see how that, how that works.
Put the cruiser at the exit of the street to, uh...
You could put the cruiser at the parking lot, the new parking lot they just created for the church.
Right.
And he's got a clear shot right up Gilmore Street. And he'd be writing a few tickets. But the ironic part was, there was a cruiser, but somebody stopped on Fails Place tonight. So I don't know what he did, but...
And, and so, lastly, Ro-Roger, this memo was from, it's to the Board of Selectmen, but it's a joint memo from you and Chief O'Leary?
Yeah.
So I'm assuming his name is on this, you guys worked on this together?
Chief, Chief O'Leary got the petition also, too, so...
So is he on board with, with, uh, an enforcement provision in this?
Oh, yeah. Yeah, I don't know how, you know, I don't know what, if we give them the black and whites, they, they will enforce them. Uh, how, how, how long, you know, how many hours a day they can do that, I don't know, you know, that's, that's up to the chief.
That's a bit, that's a manpower issue, how you're gonna do that.
Yeah, that's up to the chief.
But I think that at least if they have got some ability to enforce it, they can at least take some steps to do that.
Yeah, I mean, all it takes is a couple of tickets and bang.
So your recommendation, it says local traffic only and no-through-traffic, it's not all...
But I'll do either one, or both.
What, what's your recommendation from your experience?
The local traffic only is, is a common sign, um, but that requires a judgment on the part of the police officer. No, uh, no-through-traffic doesn't require a judgment. He might stop a homeowner that's coming out of there, but if they can prove they live on the street and they're coming out, they don't get a ticket.
Roger, on the petition, they're asking for not a through-way, Monday through Friday, three to seven.
Yeah, I, I, I don't like that.
Is that too wordy?
It is a through-way.
But, but is it too, is the sign too wordy?
Yeah, the sign's too wordy anyway, that, that one's not even in the manual. But I think the low, you know, the local has its place. It's, it's, it's a, you know, it's a reinforced, uh, to the no-through-traffic, it really is.
Can you put local traffic only and then underneath, police take notice?
Take notice? You can, the police take notice is an advisory sign, it's not the same color as the, uh...
But the driver doesn't know whether there's a policeman right at the end of the street or not.
Right.
So you put these on Fails and Gilmore?
I put them on Fails, Gilmore and, and Granite. Granite's no price.
It's time you get to Rock Hill, you're already at the rotary, so why would you take it unless you're going there?
Right.
Okay.
The, the police take notice signs are typically used for private parking situations or parking scenarios. These, the, the signs themselves are legal signs, the ones you're proposing.
When you vote, once you vote.
As soon as you do that, they're, they can enforce that immediately. So, um, anybody who does so, violates it does so at their own risk.
And could it not just be up to the residents to call the police if we're noticing still a lot of traffic coming through after a sign is posted?
And write numbers down.
License plate number.
Yeah, they can find those in thirty seconds today, so...
All right, so it sounds like we've got some consensus for, uh, no-through-traffic on the Fails, Gilmore and Granite, intersections right on Main Street, nothing on the other side, obviously. So if we could entertain a motion in that direction?
Can I ask a question on the Granite one? Would you end that somewhere, because what if I'm coming up from, you know, Stop and Shop, and I wanna get on Granite Street to go to the State Forest with my dog? I mean, is that through-traffic, or is it, I'm not visiting anybody? And how is Granite gonna be fully enforceable?
Well, if you go all the way on Granite, you're gonna end up on Prospect or Lakeview, so...
Yeah.
So that's not, that's not really through-traffic.
Yeah, the shorter streets are definitely easier to enforce and control.
Yeah.
Um, I'm just trying to avoid, and I know people, if those two falls and, and the next one, everybody will go on Granite if there's not a sign, but do we end it at the end of, where is that, Rock Hill that connects?
Market.
Market?
Yeah, you have to take a left on Market, if you go straight on Granite, you're not violating it.
The next, next street is Union and, you know? I, I don't think it makes a lot of difference, Chris, really.
Well, a question for the neighborhood, I mean, this suggestion, do you think it's gonna have the impact that you're looking for?
We're hoping.
It's a start.
You get a start.
And I think, you know, Mr. Hill suggested it, it's a start, and if that doesn't work, then I'll go around a petition to turn it to a one-way. At least Fails anyway.
We'll, we'll take another look at it.
So, so can we ask you, uh, this of you guys, so six months from now? Could you make it a point to talk to these neighbors and come back to us with, hey, this is working or it's not working? So we get some feedback, waiting, rather than waiting for the complaints?
Absolutely.
So, um, June, July, August, September, October, say, say, October, November, before the winter? In that way, if, if there's an adjustment needed, if we have to remove or re, rethink it, it gives us an opportunity to do that?
Absolutely.
Uh, could we put a counter, you know how they run the, to count how many cars go through? We already have a, you could say a base, Opsomograph counted ninety cars. So could we do the, the counters on the streets to see if the...
We don't have, we don't have that.
We don't have, we don't have our own counter?
You'd have to hire somebody to do that.
No, no, you know, that's those things that they put on the street?
Yeah.
We don't have those, I wonder?
No.
We don't. Usually, they're usually the state or the county.
And you usually put those to get a baseline, and then you make changes and then you compare it, so it gets a little complicated.
M A P C has them, but they usually use them when they're trying to determine, uh, levels of service of an intersection or a road or something like that. That's what they're using. We did them on, on Oak Street, because we wanted to find out how many trucks versus how many cars. You remember when we did that, Jim, yeah?
I'm sure the residents will have a counter, and they'll know if it's working or not.
You can come and sit in my driveway any afternoon if you'd like to, sit down.
Jimmy, that's the old-fashioned way, punching a keyboard.
The old baseball cluckers or golf cluckers.
You know, look, Chris, I do see a problem with Granite Street. Because Granite Street goes for at least two miles all the way down to...
It does.
Down to Lakeview.
Yeah, I mean, an enforceable problem, I mean...
And to help people that live way down the end of Granite Street, that they can't use their street. I mean, that, there's a lot, that, that's a much bigger neighborhood, it's not a wide street.
Why don't we just do a local traffic only on Granite Street?
That, that's probably not a bad idea, maybe? Um, I don't know, just a thought, 'cause the, like I said, the other two streets are small enough and enforceable enough and easy to tell if, if I'm cutting through there to avoid...
They'll get the idea, they'll see two in a row that are no-through-traffic, and then local traffic only. And I mean, if you're driving a car and you're moving along even at fifteen miles an hour, uh...
But, but if it's on, if it's on, um, Granite, so, so Fails and Gilmore kinda go into Gilmore, right? 'Cause that's the, you are, you're on Gilmore.
Right.
So Granite goes all the way through. So if you're a mile down on Granite, it's still not through-traffic, 'cause you're on Granite.
No, you were saying to just put a local traffic only on, on...
I mean, not, not through, yeah, local tra...
Yeah, that'll work, that's fine.
But it goes back to who's local, I'm local, I'm not from...
But that's fine.
Plane bill, you know, it's, it's like, you know what I'm saying, it's...
I know.
How do you define local?
It, it requires judgment on the part of the police officer if he's gonna hand out a ticket, you know? Discretion.
Also, Fails and Gilmore are, are further back from the common than...
Right.
So your frustration level's gonna be a little higher at Fails than it is by the time you get to Granite, 'cause you can see, you can see the common in Granite.
Yeah, Granite, you're not far away.
But when you're at Fails and Gilmore, you're pretty far back, and if you're in a hurry...
See, I'm more guilty of taking the right on Granite in the past, as opposed to, you know, Fails or, or the other one. A lot of times, I would take the right on Granite and then the left on Market to avoid the common.
So you're the one who's...
Yeah, yeah, that was in the past, I've, I've changed my ways now.
I do, and if I get caught, I'm saying I'm going to your house. It's a party with Arty.
So there are some kids, young kids now, that live right up at the top of Granite Street.
Yeah.
Yeah, and that's a tough stretch, I mean, it's...
Oh, I've seen cars airborne coming down there.
Yeah. Yeah, I don't know.
So we're good with a local traffic only on Granite?
Can we, maybe on Granite, can we... Can we, maybe on Granite, can we do at the top, know-through traffic and then right after?
Local traffic only right after Gilmore Street?
Yeah.
Yeah, we can do that.
That kind of softens that whole up a little bit. And I'm not a fan of putting too many signs, but
Well, the common has more signs than you can imagine right now, so. These are, these are not on the common, these are off the common and they, they do regulate.
So it sounds like know-through, know-through and then, uh, local traffic on the last one?
Yeah.
You're okay with that?
Yeah, and I can split it too if he wants to, I can put know-through and then, then put local traffic only on the south end of Gilmore, of, of Granite Street. You know, when you, if, if you take the right and, and you get through the know, know-through traffic, then you, then you'll come to the local traffic only. And if, uh, you know, but I, I, I think that just takes the curse off, that's all it does. I was told by Officer McGrath, maybe two or three years ago, that supposedly the speed limit on the side streets, if it's not posted, is thirty miles an hour. But what he said to me was, obviously, it's not thirty miles an hour here. Now, I yelled at somebody the other day and he jammed on his brakes and he backed up and I said, oh, oh, here we go. And he got out of the car, he's a very nice guy, lives around the corner in Granite Street, and he said, what do you think should be the speed limit here? And I said, I would like to see people crawling down here because there's so many little kids running around. And he was very, he was very agreeable and he's, he had, he has a problem with Granite Street. People flying down there.
It's long, yeah. See, here you've got a short street, you've got the Montessori school and you've got narrow roads with a ninety degree turn, so it's, it's a very You know, I'm always cautious putting signs up because then everyone says they want them in. But it's a, it's a very unique situation where you have, you know, right at the rotary there.
Well, when the Montessori school is dropping off and being picked up, those are one ways, those are one-cast streets.
You can't get more than ten miles an hour.
You can't get through there.
Alright, so do I hear a motion?
Yeah. So I make a motion that, uh, we allow Roger Harefield to install
I think Roger Hill would be
Roger Hill, sorry. Too many Rogers. Uh, Roger Hill to install a know-through traffic sign on Falls Place, Gilmore and Granite Street.
Local traffic only.
And then at the bottom of Granite, local traffic only.
Where at Intersex Market and Gilmore.
Where at Intersex Market and Gilmore.
Second for the discussion. Other than thank you for making my commute five minutes longer now.
Shouldn't cut through.
All those in favor? Motion carries five. And so if you could come back in six months, right before the winter and just give us an update?
Sure.
Do you want this letter to your neighbor?
Alright, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Roger, will you coordinate with Chief O'Leary, let him know that the signs are going up?
Sure. Take a, take a couple of days, we got to order the sign.
We got to do anything with this other half of this while Roger's here, the Leonard Street.
I can explain it to you.
Yeah.
I don't need a vote right now, but
Okay, do you want to explain that one?
Yeah, um
Okay, good to see you.
I don't know if you people have seen it, but the, we have, Leonard Street's a cut-through for trucks right now, although it isn't
Always has been.
It isn't right now because I've got the road ground up and they're not exactly happy about going through there. But what it is, is they try to avoid the common. And so they, they cut through Leonard Street, go all the way out to Coacassett. Some go left and take, um, Maple Street up over the hill and back down to Mechanic. Some go right and take Pleasant Street up over the hill and back down to Mechanic. And they stay out of the common, and that's, that's their trick. And there's a lot of trailer truck traffic on the street. Past the railroad tracks, it's, it's all residential. Except for one commercial site down there. So my idea was to put those signs right at the railroad tracks and just try to keep the, the trucks on the end of Mechanic Street and force the trucks to go through the common because whether you like it or not, the common is what, what it is. It's, it's not a hard place to drive, it just
It's supposed to peak times.
Yeah, peak hours, you get it. And, um, the planning board has some ideas in the future about doing some channelization up there that, that might help, I don't know. But roundabouts are designed to do that, they're designed to attenuate speed but move the traffic. And, and the trucks aren't happy when they get, they have to slow down for stuff like that.
On that street too, I lived there when we first moved to town and my wife actually grew up on Leonard Street. It's not just the trucks cutting through there, it's the same exact thing.
For cars too, yeah.
When we lived there and our twins were young, I mean, there were cars doing forty, fifty miles an hour down Leonard Street and it still exists today. I bet you if you petitioned all the residents, they'd want you to leave the road just the way it is right now, unpaved.
The residents want unpaved, believe me. Leonard and Sherman and West Leonard and Carpenter are the worst four streets in town now. And, uh, and I, you know, I, I hesitated to do them until we discovered the new process for lining a specific cement pipe. And no, I'm not too hesitant, I think we got to get these roads done while we can.
So is this something you're just letting us know about?
Yeah, I mean, I won't have pavement on there until the end of the summer. And we're going to do a new sidewalk and, um, uh, change the grading a little bit along the sides of the road. The sidewalks are concrete and they're falling apart. And I don't want people stumbled on the sidewalk and then, you know, that becomes a liability for the town.
So the road's going to be in the condition it is until end of the summer?
As soon as I get, well, we don't control the contractors. If J P Keating comes in tomorrow and says we're going to pave the road, great, get going, because we're ready for it. But I can't, uh, I can't make them come in and pave, you know? They know that it's on their list. They're working seven days a week and at night on state highways right now. So, you know, it's hard to get them off the state highways, they get priority.
So Chairman, just one other question, Roger, I know while you're here tonight, um, the, the additional signs that you ordered for North Street, are those, uh
Not North Street, uh, Cross Street.
Cross Street. No, for the, uh, for the new, for the, no, no taxis and limousines, no, no standing?
Oh, I haven't got them yet.
Yeah, but you ordered those, right?
Yeah, and actually, I'm going to replace the similar signs on, when I do the speed signs on Cross Street, I'm going to replace the old signs for parking because they're, uh, they're pretty bad. I marked them up.
But so, but you're, but you're, any idea when those new signs will come in? Because we're heading
Well, Fred's already put some up.
No, I mean, the, the no standing for the, for the limousines, because it's been a, a concern of the board and the, and the town in that area because limousines and taxis now
They haven't, those signs haven't come in yet. They've been ordered though.
As soon as they come in, I appreciate if you can get
We'll put them up the same day we got.
We're heading into the new concert season, it's new event season, so obviously it's a big concern at this point, so.
Not a problem.
Okay, great, thank you, Roger.
And, and thank you for jumping on the Cross Street emails, requests that came in.
I went up there today and marked them out.
Quick turnaround.
But they got to be, uh, they get, they'll probably take a week to come in. And I'm going to replace the signs that are there now on the same post, but then I'm going to add, um, four more in the direction of, uh, one forty. And three more coming back. So they'll, they'll be spaced out a little over a thousand feet.
And those are thirty miles an hour?
Thirty miles an hour, that's what the street is posted for anyway. And that doesn't require the board to take any action, so.
Yeah, that, that gentleman was very appreciative, both of you guys, and you.
And Roger, when's the building, when will that be completed?
If you can tell me when the gas company's going to put my gas in, then I can tell you I'll finish it. I mean, they've been, they've been dilly-dallying with it for a month, but everything else is done, in fact.
Electricity's done too, right?
When the, when the warning came over my cellphone tonight on the tornado, the girls are working on the building. And the old building is a block building and they're notoriously brittle in, in a tornado. So I went down there and I said, and it was really bad when I went down. And I got out and went upstairs with the girls and I said, let's go in the basement of the new building. If you get a chance, you can stop by, we'll let, you know, take you in the building. It is, that is, for a modular building, it's built, Bill says he will go there if we have a hurricane.
That's the safest building in town.
The underside of that, those modules is all steel. You got longitudinal twelve-inch I-beams, the length of all the modules, and then you get cross members every four feet. And the joists are laid over the cross members, and the cross members are six-inch I-beams too. And it, and we bolted it down and welded it down to the foundation and I, I, I welded all the lally columns too, so it's not going anywhere.
Nice to hear.
Yeah, and we're still within budget.
Then we can do a modular town hall.
No, don't go there. Don't go there.
Move on. Alright, thank you, Roger.
I, I'm hoping, to answer your question, I'm hoping July first, but if the gas company cooperates, we might be able to make it. But if they don't, uh, it'll be the first weekend of July.
It looks nice.
Yeah, I got the stairs coming in from Arizona, so. We'll get it done.
Thanks, Roger.
Okay, back up to, um, Mary Beth, you want a discussion and a vote for the fire contract?
Sure, um, just very quickly, this, this contract has come before you three times. It's included in your signature packet, but it's not in these packets because this board has seen it in executive session, saw our presentation and then town meeting voted it. So what it really is, is, um, there were multiple versions of memorandum of agreement and side letters and salary schedules and fire department requested when we sat down to negotiate that we consolidate the documents. So, um, we've done that over the last couple of months, we've had it run through the union, through, um, Randy's staff. So the accounting people have looked at it to make sure that it's in agreement with what they use and also works with our munis. And Marcia's been great at helping us coordinate that, so, um, all of the changes have been incorporated, it's going to be in your packet tonight. There's two originals, one's going to go to the fire union and one will stay with the Board of Selectmen. And, um, all of the changes in the new organizational structure, as you recall, will be implemented on July one. So, um, that's going to be in your packet. And then, um Is that a vote situation?
I think we, we haven't voted on that yet, I don't believe.
You, you voted on the memorandum, the agreement, and town meeting ratified it, I'm not sure if you need
I don't know if you need to do the other vote, I think it's just an approval of the, of the existing, it's a consolidated agreement. It's just not the signature is all that is, it's already approved.
Alright, so that'll be in our signature at the end of the meeting, great, thank you.
That was just more of a presentation, just to make sure you knew what it was.
Yeah, make sure you know what you're signing.
And then we have a, an item, the policies on sexual harassment and vacation?
Yes, so in your packet you have a draft, um, equal employment opportunity discrimination and sexual harassment policy. This was created, um, by an attorney for us. It, um, what it does is it replaces the existing harassment policy that all of our employees have signed. The other one was outdated, this is in total compliance with all federal, state and local laws. The main driving factor of this policy is to ensure that in all, in our workplace, in the town of Foxborough, all employees are treated with dignity and respect. It, in all employment practices and employment programs, um, it tells you the process for filing a complaint if you were to have a discrimination or harassment, um, complaint. And it also ensures that employees are free from retaliation when they file a complaint. This will cover all employees, seasonal interns, board members, committee members. So we are going to include this in new board member packets. This has been included in the recreation seasonal manual with all of our new employees. And there'll be a memo that goes to all employees, um, with a cover sheet and we're going to be announcing training that goes along with this. So there will be a mandatory training for employees. We've engaged Jack Dolan, he's, um, an attorney, former town administrator and has an H R consulting and training background. He'll be doing training in July and August for all employees. So this policy will be in full enforcement and cover all of our, um, employees. We're also going to film the training, so for some of the departments that have a little trouble, um, getting to, for example, the fire department with four groups and, um, you know, it's hard to train them during shift because they're going out on calls all the time. So what we do is, um, create a C D that they, or DVD that they can view and then sign off on. And we can make that available to boards and committees as well. So we're asking tonight that you, um, review it, um, give it the approval and then, um, the actual document gets signed by the town manager.
Mr. Mary Beth, my company's just come through this where we were informed that it's dangerous to live without a policy like this. And I went through this a number of times and it is spot on, accurate. There's not a flaw in it.
Thank you. We, we worked hard to, um, to incorporate the good things in the old policy and then keep this in compliance with, um, you know, all the M C A D and federal laws.
No, it's really complete.
Good, thank you. So what we do with this is just an added, uh, thing, is we have done a signature sheet and employees are going to sign this and say that I understand the policy as I've read it. I understand the process for filing a complaint. And then they'll also say that I understand and, and I'm, uh, I, I understand the pol, the policy and I, um, agree that I'm not subject to discrimination under the policy. And if they are, then we conduct investigation.
With their training certificate, then you're complete.
So the law requires that you do training, um, every two years. So what we'll do is do full-out training this year, next year we'll, we recirculate the policy. And then for new employees, they can, um, view the, the C D. So that's, that policy.
Thank you, any more discussion on the board?
No, I've got no issues with this at all, it's really good.
Thank you.
Thank you for doing that.
The next policy you have before you is a revision of the current vacation bylaw.
For some reason I didn't get it.
We can use mine if you want.
Yeah, that wasn't in my file.
No vacation for you?
It's important to note, this policy, um, only addresses the ten bylaw employees. So it's a start. We Personnel Wage Board worked tirelessly on this, it was the first project that we, we looked at when we reconvened that board and we've looked at it, um, at at least four of our meetings. We've consulted with Randy on the actual implementation of this process because it's, it's going to be different. Last week we met with munis to actually, that's our payroll company, to actually create the tables to attach to employees. So what this does, this vacation policy, is it addresses some of the drawbacks we had on new employees. For example, under the bylaw, we hire a new employee, their vacation doesn't kick in for at least a year. And in this, um, you know, in a recruitment process, that is really very, very difficult. For example, now, right now we have a library director job posted. We're asking for someone with at least five years' experience. Most directors are going to come to us with four weeks' vacation and, you know, want to do, um, negotiate that. They would under this policy, depending on what month we hired them, say we hired them in, um, October, they might have to wait fifteen months before they can take a vacation under the, the way that the policy works, because an employee earns it in one year and takes it in the next. So this policy, what we're trying to do is allow for greater flexibility, um, to, uh, have employees accrue in real time. So every month you get a vacation allotment. And then it accrues, we have a chart, you know, based on if you're a two-week employee, three-week employee, four-week employee. For employees who currently are existing and have earned vacation last year and are expecting their allotment this July one, they're going to start accruing under the new policy and still have their old. We've built in, um, to address the transition, we've said that employees can use twenty-five percent of their previous earned vacation this year. So, for example, if you're the three-week employee, they're going to get their three weeks July one because they've been here and they've been under the old policy. And then they're going to start accruing under the new policy. It does not impact the town's unfunded liability because if these people were to leave, they were allowed that much vacation anyway.
Even during the probational period, like the first six months, if they decide? The way I read it, you can take up the five days, a month from after you're hired
Right.
and say you don't make it past three months because of whatever reason, what happens to those?
The town deserves the right to, um, in any final payout, take that money back.
Pull that back?
Yep. So the policy addresses that. So this does only impact ten people, we're going to, you know, based on discussion here and approval, we're going to, you know, send a memo clearly explaining it, showing them their own personal situation and how it impacts it. But really the, um, you know, it's important to note that they're going to get, um, full credit for the vacation they earned in the previous year. This new accrual starts July one, we have a way to address the transition year. And, um, it does help us as a recruitment tool for new employees that they can accrue time and take it in real time. And it does give our current employees more flexibility. And it does give our current employees more flexibility. And in case you're wondering who those ten employees are, those would be DPW Director, the Deputy Fire Chief, the Library Director, the Police Chief, the two Police Lieutenants, the Treasurer Collector, the Assistant Town Manager, Executive Assistant to the Board of Selectmen, and the Administrative Assistant to the Board of Selectmen. Those are currently our non-union bylaw employees that would be impacted. The hope would be that this, if this process works, this could be something we use in collective bargaining, enroll it up to negotiate it into contracts as well. So this is a good, small first step.
What's beneficial about doing it this way is that we're not letting collective bargaining policy dictate our policy. We're actually rolling our policies now, which is a policy that we wanna have in place for the town, and then see if we can build contracts around that. So we're trying to reverse the order in how we're doing it.
Anybody have any questions about that?
Discussion from the board?
Just obvious questions, but this is consistent with the way vacation is presently handled, from a ten through eleven years.
Yes. So this was built off the bylaw schedule.
Schedule's the same, right, but now you're gonna be working on a real-time accrual basis.
Right, exactly. So we built it using the actual bylaw chart, and now we've configured it in... We can configure it into Munis effective July 1, so that people will be attached to the correct accrual.
On the max, the max carryover is ten days.
Right. But in the transition years, if you're somebody who's, you know, has earned all the time, you know, we don't want someone to take six weeks' vacation. If they were earned last year's three weeks, and then this year's the transition year, and they're earning three, we've put in that they can only take twenty-five percent of that. They can't take the full bulk of the previous year's accrual.
Effectively, they have four years, it's a four-year implementation.
You work down your accrual after four years.
Yep.
This morning, I was at the seminar that I attended, I was talking to Mary Beth, and I commented, from the information in our packet tonight, I asked her if the town of Foxborough was really behind on things, because we've been implementing new processes and stuff. And she said, yes, but it was the function of everything being spread out. Now that we have an HR director, and everything's kinda consolidated, the town can do this stuff and bring the town up to the 21st century in regard to compliance and everything. And Mary Beth was saying that she has a list of things, and she's crossing them off.
There's a little whiteboard in the office.
So thank you, you know, you're really doing your HR-
Well, thanks.
-job.
Good. Well, you gave me a good segue, can I just plug my current job opening? Library Director, we posted the library... The library director has announced his retirement, worked with the trustees to create a process, and the job was posted on June 17th, it closes on July 15th. And we're looking for a qualified library director with at least five years' experience. And it's on our website, it's on the Mass Libraries website, we've also posted it at a couple of other sites, the Simmons College, one Mass Munis poll. So if anyone's interested, we'd love to get your resume.
So they'd be walking into a beautiful library with a very well-run library board of trustees?
Absolutely, and a really, you know, I have to say, it's one of the better-written contracts as well for employees, because we're in the middle of contract negotiations, it's a very-
Good contract.
It's a good group of employees.
Do we have to vote on this policies, the harassment and the vacation policies?
I think, under Town Manager Act, we want you to review them, and then it gets approved by Bill.
Oh, okay.
So I guess you could adopt, vote to adopt, and Bill could sign them.
You support the support?
Is he okay with that?
Yeah.
All right, to have a motion to, an affirmative to support the... Do it separately, as presented, the sexual harassment policy? I'll make the motion.
Oh, I thought you were making the motion.
I'll tell you, as Chairman, I very seldom will ever make a motion.
I'll make the motion. I make a motion that we adopt the sexual harassment policy effective June 2015.
Motion made, seconded, further discussion? All those in favor?
I make a motion, we adopt the vacation policy that we reviewed tonight. Is there an effective date on this?
July 1.
Effective July 1, 2015.
Thank you.
Okay, motion made, seconded, further discussion? All those in favor? All right, motion carries five zero, thank you.
Thank you.
Bill, I know you went out of term, but you pretty much finished your town manager-
Yes, I'm good.
Do I just give the power update?
Yes, thank you. There was a... We had... We lost about a thousand customers, lost power tonight, based on the storms.
One more.
Yeah. We hope to have power be restored shortly. That's the latest update from Chief Fire Chief, and that End Star is... Or End Grid, rather, is working on it as we speak.
Did you guys have more wind and stuff down that end of town, or...
I wasn't home, and I just, I got the call that it was out.
The north side was impacted, according to the chief, one thousand homes.
But according to the news, there was no touchdown of an actual tornado. There was several warnings, but no actual sightings so far.
Yeah, I mean, we had heavy rain on our side, but no wind whatsoever, really.
All right, so action items, there's four action items tonight.
First one, acceptance of adoption fee, make a motion, we accept $142 adoption fee from Karen Furlong for the animal control with gratitude.
Second.
Motion made a second, further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries five zero.
Next one is another animal control one. I make a motion, we accept the gift of $500 for the cow must eliminate. Founder's Day.
I think I should recuse myself from that one. I think I judged that pooping contest.
Actually, I think you did, Jim, we have a nice picture here.
Yeah, I saw the referee's picture and everything.
You and the referee uniform.
Was that in the pack?
No, I printed it, just in case we needed proof.
One of my low points of being a select-
Those of elimination.
The fact that I qualified for the pooping contest.
The cow actually did eliminate, right, so we had a winner.
Special recognition to-
Right on the line.
Little Jamie Calabrese, who is my assistant.
The question is, they kick up a little dust in the process?
Well, I was told it was either gonna be me or Jay Barrow, so I told them, I took the bullet for him, so...
I'll second that.
Motion made, seconded, discussion, for all those in favor? Motion carries five zero.
Third one, from Foxborough Fire, I make a motion, we accept the mobile lighting generator plant from the Mima grant donation value to $10,247.77.
Second. Further discussion? All those in favor? Motion carries unanimous.
Foxborough Police K-9, I make a motion, we accept the gift of $200 from the Hockamock Kettle Club to be used for the protection of dogs.
Second.
Motion made, seconded, further discussion? All those in favor? All right, motion unanimous. And then there's thirteen items, the only packet, but I wanted to bring attention to... There's a couple items in here on dam safety.
Yes.
And with the deadline, they've given us thirty days to address-
All three of those are actually being worked on by Public Works. They've got money set aside to address some of those areas, those three areas. So I've gone over those three with the Public Works Director, and so he said he does have those.
And you think they're all addressable?
They're all addressable.
Okay.
It's just a matter of time, he's apparently been working with DCR on all three of those.
Is there a reason why it took seven years?
Don't know.
I'm just curious.
Yeah. Maybe just grabbing, getting funding for them, or whatever the case may be, or... I'm not surprised, I mean, this is an ongoing issue across the state.
No, I know, it's a big issue. I think when this came up, that was when there was some incredible storms, every dam in every area was flooded.
Right.
And then it was highlighted, and then it just disappeared after that, I think off of everybody's radar. So could we have, where there's dates and penalties for the end of July, could we have a follow-up item on the agenda, just to see how the...
Yeah.
Because you're right, I mean, if it went seven years unattended, I don't want it to... And then there was another item in here that said that they needed to be on our agenda. The franchise writes one, they requested it to be on our agenda.
They're on public hearing July 7.
July 7?
Yeah.
At 7:50 and 8 o'clock, because it's tour.
Oh, you're good, you remember that.
No, I am.
Yeah, sometimes, if it's in our information, it just doesn't jump out.
Yeah, just to let you know that we did schedule that this week.
Great, thank you. Okay, that concludes it. Anything else before we close? A motion to...
Make a motion that we adjourn the meeting.
Motion made second, all those in favor? All right, thank you, everybody, have a good night.